The meeting is called to order. I'm still standing for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can you read the statement certification in the meeting?
The meeting has been advertised according to Sunshine Law.
Please go ahead.
Chairman Zira.
Here.
Mr. Conroy.
Here.
Mayor Wilham.
Here.
Mr. Vanda.
Here.
Mr. Foley.
Here.
Mr. Ragnano.
Here.
Ms. Forman.
Here.
Mrs. Alvarado is not here yet. Mr. Zandari.
Here.
Ms. Nellis.
Here.
Mr. Dine.
Here.
Mr. Pugh Regno.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Capisto.
Here.
Application before the board. We have PB 2116, 125 Academy Street, block 7701, lots 13 through 19. The applicant, St. Mary's and St. Mercurius Church, is seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval, reverse subdivision approval, and bulk variance relief in order to construct a new parking garage in a new church facility to be known as the Coptic Youth Center, as well as to reconfigure the existing parking area.
Mr. Chairman, Councilor's name is Robert Cassiolo. I represent the applicant. Should I open, sir?
Yes, please proceed.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, Councilor's name is Robert Cassiolo, the firm is Cassiolo Bamako, 524 Union Avenue in Belleville. I represent the applicant, St. Mary's and St. Mercurius Church. My client is the owner of 125 Academy Street, lots 13 through 19, in block 7701. My client is seeking preliminary and final major site plan and bulk variance approval in order to construct a new parking garage and a new church facility to be known as the Coptic Youth Center. They are also seeking to renovate the existing parking area, which serves the existing church at 125 Academy Street. In order to develop, the existing dwellings on lots 13 through 17, as well as the existing structure on light block 19, will be developed. If approved, the development will include 105 parking spaces, of which five will be handicapped spaces. The new facility known as the Coptic Youth Center will be located over the parking garage. The property is located in RC multifamily zone, where houses of worship are permitted uses. Obviously, that's why we were before the planning agreement. The applicant is requesting preliminary and final site plan approval, and certain bulk variance relief and waivers, all of which will be mentioned by the engineer and thoroughly reviewed by the planer. The witnesses you'll hear from are Father Luke of St. Mary's and St. Mercurius, Beth Kenderdine, the site engineer, Ivan Cedra, the architect, and Peter Stack, the planner. If it is okay, I will call my first witness.
Thank you.
Father Luke.
Yes.
I'm usually hesitant at pronouncing last names, but I need to try.
Father Luke Istafanos.
Mr. Luke, you swear upon the testimony about gifts will be the truth, all true, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you. Can you just say "I" something?
I-St-A-F-A-N-O-U-S.
Father Istafanos, with what church are you affiliated?
St. Mary's and St. Mercurius Coptic Orthodox Church in Belleville.
And where is that church located exactly? What is the address?
125 Academy Street, Belleville, New Jersey, 07109.
And how long have you been with the church?
Approximately 11 years.
And can you briefly describe the church's mission?
The church's mission is to serve foremost the Coptic community that is immigrant from Egypt, mostly from the persecution in Egypt, and also raising the new generation of the Coptic community of the youth. We presented some of them here with us today, serving the community at large, both in Belleville and New Jersey.
What is it you're seeking approval to build?
We're seeking approval to build a youth center to accommodate the increasing youth in our congregation. We need to engage them in meaningful activities during the week, during the weekend, wood service activities to protect them from being disengaged with the church, and as well to accommodate for the increasing demands of the service of the current services of the church as well.
And can you review what it is that the church does, basically review the number of families, that kind of thing, for the benefit of the board, so they know exactly what you are and what you're looking for?
So I prepared like a page and...
You can read from that, Father. Just read slowly, so everybody can hear exactly what you're saying.
It should take three minutes. So we aspire to build a Coptic Youth Center to help us perform our duty towards our parishioners and to the community. St. Mary's and St. Mercurius Coptic Church is one of 28 Coptic churches in New Jersey. In 2002, this church started in Belleville, not only to serve the Coptic community comprised mainly of immigrants fleeing persecution in Egypt, but has also been serving the Belleville community in great deal. BCCS is Belleville Community, Coptic Community Services, only one example of that, that has been always involved in the community here in Belleville. The current church building, originally a synagogue, is by no means able to provide enough space or facilities to serve our parishioners for the following reasons. One, we serve around 300 families, and approximately a quarter of them attend service on Sundays. This is approximately 75 families per week. The 75 families have approximately 150 kids that attend the liturgy and receive communion every Sunday, and then they head to the little room that we call the cafeteria for a quick snack before they go to Sunday School classes. We provide Sunday School classes to every grade, from pre-K to 12th grades, which means 14 grades, 14 classrooms. We only have four. The proposed project is terribly needed to provide these rooms for Sunday School, so that we do not resort to using other inadequate church spots for Sunday School. We also have a very tight cafeteria for the parents to have a small fellowship meal after the mass, while waiting for the children to finish Sunday School. The new project will demolish the existing cafeteria and four rooms, and provide extra parking spots, while providing larger cafeteria accommodating the parents and the younger kids. We are in great need to keep engaging our youth and children in meaningful activities, such as midweek youth meetings, English masses, sports activities, et cetera. The Coptic Youth Center will provide us with meeting rooms, basketball courts, or gym, a bookstore, and a youth sanctuary. We are currently in great shortage of offices of administration and management, as well as storage areas for normal church operations. All of these needs are accounted for in the proposed center. We are currently not equipped at all to serve handicapped individuals. We need ready access to them, white doors, ramps, elevators, more importantly, handicapped equipped bathrooms. All of these requirements are fulfilled in the proposed center. We also need to increase the number of the parking spots that we have, which are approximately 30 spots maximum, to facilitate the parking process for our parishioners, and make it easier for them to park in the center rather than in the streets. We believe that our proposed center will not only help the church fulfill its objectives, goals, and missions, but also will help us solve some of the complaints occasionally made by neighbors regarding street traffic and noise of kids playing by adding more safely contained and aesthetically pleasing buildings.
Mr. Chairman, I have no other questions. Father felt more comfortable reading his statement than me directing questions, day by day, set forth the answers to the things I would have asked. I obviously have more witnesses, but I open him to questions by the board members.
Any members have questions, this witness? Anybody in the public have a question? Now please proceed to your next...
Ms. Kenderdine?
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
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 Here's your full name, please.
Beth Kenderdine.
And you have to be sworn in, as you know.
We swear upon the testimony about gifts will be the truth, all true, and nothing but the truth. I do, thank you.
Ms. Kenderdine, what's your business address, and what is your occupation?
I work for Edwards Engineering Group, located at 69 West Dent Avenue in Somerville, New Jersey. I am a professional engineer licensed in the state of New Jersey.
And for how long have you been practicing in the field of engineering?
I've been at Edwards Engineering Group for 23 years. I've had my professional license since 2005.
Have you tested for any words of language?
I have.
And were you accepted as an expert on each and every occasion as an expert in the field of engineering?
Yes, I have.
Mr. Chairman, I submit that Ms. Kenderdine is qualified in the field of engineering.
We'll accept her as an expert.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you prepare a site plan for this proposed church?
I did.
And would you first review the location of the project?
Certainly. I'm going to refer to sheet C-00, which is the cover sheet of my plan set. The plan set is dated July 20th, 2021. The property is located at 125 Academy Street. It's comprised of lots 13 through 19, in block 7701. On Academy Street, it is between Washington Avenue and Hornblower Avenue, and Rutgers Court dead ends to the back of the site.
And would you please describe the existing site?
Certainly. I'm going to sheet C-1.0 of the same plan set. The site is comprised of the existing church building, which is on lot 18 and lot 19. And then there are five residential properties located on lots 13 through 17. There's a small gravel parking lot that is located behind these two residential properties, and another paved area located behind the church building that's access off Rutgers Court.
And can you review the topography of this parcel?
Well, anybody who's familiar with Academy Street knows that it's pretty well sloped. So the, excuse me, the western part of the site is at approximately elevation 101, and it slopes eastward down to approximately elevation 74. So there's a 27-foot change in elevation from one side to the other.
The existing landscaping, can you review what there is of existing landscape?
There's some street trees and low shrubs along the site front edge, some residential landscaping. There's hedges, excuse me. Some hedges along the existing building, some larger trees, and some row of evergreens along the eastern property.
And can you discuss the proposed site plan layout?
Certainly. I'm skipping over sheet two, and I am on sheet C-3.0, which I've colored in a little bit to make it a little clearer about the proposed layout. So in the center of the site, this is the existing church building that will remain. Over here is the existing cafeteria, which is being demolished. So we're proposing a new small parking lot off of Rutgers Court with 12 parking stalls that will be reserved either for clergy or other church personnel, and that lot will be gated, so all access to that parking lot will be controlled. On the western part of the site, we are proposing a large parking garage, or a building with parking on the lower two levels, with access to driveways off of Academy Street. So the first driveway will access the upper level of parking, the second driveway will access the lower level of parking.
The variances involved, I don't expect you to discuss the justification, but if you would just, for the benefit of everyone here, list the variances being sought, the bulk requirement, the bulk variances being sought by the application.
Certainly. We have one bulk variance for the minimum front yard of 16.9 feet. That is, the front yard here for the existing building is 16.9 feet, and we're proposing to align the new building for that same front yard side back. The requested design variances are for a designated loading zone on the site. We propose to do deliveries up Academy Street and/or Rutgers Court with small box trucks in lieu of a loading zone. We're requesting a waiver for nine-foot by 18-foot parking spaces in the eastern parking lot, whereas I believe the township wants nine-foot by 19-foot. We are requesting design waivers for two driveways up Academy Street, so that we can access both levels of the parking garage, and we are requesting design waivers for the curb cuts which exceed 20 feet for this, these two driveways.
And would you review the proposed parking ingress and egress for this project?
Certainly. Like I said, the access to the rear parking lot, to the eastern parking lot, is off of Rutgers Court. Access to the large parking garage is off of Academy Street. So there's two levels of parking. So there's approximately, the existing site can accommodate approximately 32 parking stalls, utilizing two gravel parking areas that are both, that are either accessed from Rutgers Court or from Academy Street. The proposed parking area on the eastern side will accommodate about 12 stalls, but like I said before, those are designated for clergy and church personnel, so that lot will be controlled. The parking garage will accommodate approximately 93 parking stalls, so the total number of parking stalls proposed is 105. The, it should be noted, I guess, that the construction of these two driveways will eliminate three on-street parking stalls, but we are proposing an additional 60 stalls on-site, so all of the cars that are currently parking on the street for the church facility will be accommodated on-site. There's a, excuse me, there should be noted that it's not a public parking lot, so it's not a transient use. People aren't going to be going in and out of this. It's going to be used during set schedules. The lot and the garage are intended for the existing congregants. They'll utilize the facility on a regular scheduled basis, and the use of the facility can accommodate a tighter parking design because of that. It'll be the people that are familiar with the site using the parking garage.
Can you review the existing drainage and the proposed drainage plan?
Certainly. The existing site currently drains overland to Academy Street. There is an existing, excuse me. I am flipping the page to sheet C-5.0. So there is an existing storm sewer inlet, excuse me, yes, down at the bottom of Academy Street, where it intersects with Washington Avenue. So...
Right here? Is that where you're talking?
Yeah. Right here. That's the existing inlet. So under existing conditions, the site pretty much entirely drains overland to Academy Street, where it just flows through the gutter into the storm sewer system. The proposed site, because we're disturbing more than an acre of the site, and we are proposing more than a quarter acre of new impervious coverage, we are defined as a major development, which means that we're subject to the New Jersey State Stormwater Management regulations. So as a result of that, I've designed a comprehensive stormwater management system, which is comprised of this large system of pipes, which forms an underground detention system, that's going to collect and control runoff from the building roof. That will collect control runoff into a new storm sewer system that runs down and connects into the existing system. In addition, the system proposes a bioretention basin at the front of the site, and that will allow us to treat stormwater runoff from the new parking area, the areas that get motor vehicle loaded. That will remove suspended solids before, again, it overflows into the existing storm sewer system. So the system is designed to reduce the peak rate of runoff from the site into the storm sewer system in accordance with the New Jersey State Stormwater Management rules.
And those rules require that no more water come off the property than prior to the construction, is that correct?
They require that we reduce the peak rate of runoff.
And you'll be complying with that?
Yes.
Can you review the proposed lighting?
Lighting for the parking garage will be provided internally within the building footprint, excuse me. I am now on sheet C-7.0, excuse me. Lighting around the building will be provided by building-mounted lighting, and also freestanding lighting within the eastern parking lot.
Any lighting outside involving the building?
There's building-mounted lighting, so we'll have lighting on all of the doors to provide safety pedestrian lighting from the parking lot into the building.
Now, can you give us some detail about the proposed landscaping?
Yes. I'm still on sheet C-7, so, excuse me. The landscaping is primarily ginkgo and flowering dogwood. I'm also proposing evergreen buffers along the southern property line abutting, excuse me, lot 30, and also the eastern, for the western property line, abutting the residential property. We're also proposing new shrubs, or excuse me, new evergreen trees along the western side of the property to screen the library, and we're also proposing some azalea shrubs along the front of the two buildings, and either flowering dogwoods or ginkgo trees throughout the property to provide different levels. The bioretention basin will be sunk down a little bit in the front yard, but that will have flowering dogwoods and azaleas within the basin. Those plants are in accordance with the best management practices that are preferred by the DEP.
Now, how will the refuse be in?
There are two refuse areas on the site. I'm going to go back to sheet C-3.0. The first one is an existing refuse area at the back of the existing church. They're going to continue to use that for the existing church building. We're proposing a second trash refuse area in the corner of the surface parking lot. That will provide service for the new Coptic Youth Center.
And will that be screened or blocked?
Correct, yes. We're proposing, I think it's a white vinyl fence around it, but there's also a large retaining wall on the back here. So this will actually be sunk down from the adjacent property, and there's a line of Norway spruce providing buffering along the back of the property.
And what is the type of deliveries that the church will get, and how will they be handled?
As I understand it, the church will continue to receive deliveries at the rear of the building, accessed by Rutgers Court. Apparently, they get mainly deliveries with box trucks. There's no heavy deliveries or large delivery trucks.
Trolley trucks.
Trolley trucks, thank you, that's the word I was looking for. Yes.
All right. Now, Mr. Harris prepared an extensive report with regard to this application.
He did.
Did you have an opportunity to review that report?
I have, yes.
And can you comment on that report?
Yes, I can. Is it all right if I just go through them?
Sure. So it's okay with Mr. Harris?
Yeah. Okay. Oh, yeah. That's good, thank you. I'm reading through Mr. Harris's letter to Chairman in August 25th, 2021. I am going to turn to page two and start on the site considerations. So the first comment, excuse me, is regarding the access drive to the easterly parking lot, which has a narrow driveway, 13.7 feet, with a gate. That driveway will accommodate, excuse me, an ambulance, but like I said earlier, the idea behind this lot is that it's going to be a controlled lot strictly for church personnel. So only people who have a reserved spot will have access to that parking lot, otherwise the lot will remain closed. It's not meant to be public parking, it's not meant to have a huge trip generation. It's really just meant for services for the church specifically. Emergency access to the site, like I said, by ambulance can be off of Academy Street or off of Rutgers Court. Fire access will have to maintain, be maintained on the public right of way, either Academy Street or Rutgers Court. I think probably a truck could get onto the site, but I don't know why they would want to, because they'd be between two buildings, so the better fire access would be off of the public right of way. But comment number two was regarding vehicle turning templates. I did submit that to Mr. Harris in October. We can comply with providing any additional turning templates that are requested. Questions? Number three is regarding 2010 ADA standards for accessible design. We will comply with that. My grading design does comply with ADA standards and with PROWAG, which is comment number four. We will comply with all required PROWAG and ADA requirements. That applies to question number... That applies to question number 5 as well. We'll confirm all the cross slopes of the sidewalks to make sure that they're less than 2% in compliance with ADA. Question number, or is comment number 6 was regarding the number of handicap stalls. We have revised the site layout to eliminate one handicap stall. That revised plan was submitted in October.
When you say you revised it, you dropped from 6 to 5, is that correct?
Correct. Comment number 7 is regarding signed and sealed, signed and sealed calculations for the retaining wall. We will comply with that. Comment number 8 is regarding the type of fence. So, what we're proposing right now is ornamental metal fence along the top of this retaining wall that goes around the site. We're also proposing chain link fence along the back of the site here. And I think we have some solid white vinyl fence around the trash enclosure. So, essentially, along the front edge is going to be ornamental metal fence with brick pillars, which is specified by the ordinance. And then, we're going to have ornamental metal fence wherever it's visible from the public right of way. But I think the only place that I have chain link fence proposed is at the back, behind the Norway spruce buffer, in this back area here.
So, the chain link fence would be kind of buffered by the Norway spruce?
Correct, yes. Yes. The number 9 is regarding the adequacy of the refuse area. Mr. Harris was questioning the need for a second trash and recycling area, which we added next to the Coptic Youth Center, next to the new building. That's this right here. Comment number 10 is requesting profiles for the access ramp. We will comply with that. Number 11 is regarding, there was a discrepancy between the parking, the parking lot layout, between the architectural and the site plans, which we reconciled with our revision in October. It essentially was, there was an aisle on the second level that I have hatched, just to show that there should be no parking. All right. This is a layout of the second level of parking. It's just this hatched area here, which we eliminated the parking there so that a car could get through if they needed to, to have access out of the parking garage. Comment number 12 is concerning the visibility of vehicles and signage. We will comply with that. We will submit a layout for signage and convex mirrors if they're warranted. Comment number 13 is regarding the protection of the columns. We will be providing ballers where space allows, and the columns will be painted bright yellow so that they're clearly visible throughout the parking garage. The next section is regarding stormwater management. So, I think I've gone through most of this, but comment number 1 is just providing a brief overview of how the system will function for the various storm levels. That's addressed in my stormwater management report. Essentially, what I'm doing is reducing the peak rate of runoff for the 2, 10, and 100-year storm events that run off this project site into the public storm sewer system. The question number 2 is regarding several new inlets and 15-inch polyethylene pipe. The length and slope of the pipe should be noted on the plans. We will comply with that. Question number, or comment number 3 is regarding the 40 feet of pipe that's proposed to connect the bioretention basin to the new pipe on Academy Street. We will provide the requested profile. Comment number 4 is regarding the capacity of the existing system. As far as I am aware, and I spoke with Mr. Harris earlier today, he's not aware of any flooding issues with the existing system at Academy Street. Like I said, we're reducing the peak rate of runoff, so the runoff from this project site should not significantly impact that system. Comment number 5 is requesting a stormwater system maintenance plan. We will comply with that. I am now on page 4, under lighting and landscaping. Comment number 1 appears to be informational. Comment number 2 is requesting lighting plans for the parking decks. We will provide that. Comment number 3 is regarding additional landscaping. We did submit a plan showing additional landscaping in October, and I haven't received any comments on that, but we're certainly willing to comply with any requirements that the township has regarding landscaping on the site. And comment number 4 is requesting that the sidewalk along the entire front edge be replaced, and we will comply with that. The next section is for utilities. The comment number 1 is to confirm adequate clearances. We will comply with that. And comment number 2 is regarding utility markup, and we will comply with that as well. Obviously, the architectural plans will be addressed by the architect. And the next section is just regarding additional agency approval, which we will obtain upon compliance.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions as witnesses.
I have a question. A major concern to our town is the stormwater management. We were devastated by Ida. Flooding is getting to be a worse and worse problem in our town. I understand you don't have a flooding problem. You're on top of the hill.
Right.
I mean, we're 100 feet above the river. If you guys flooded, we're all in trouble. I don't know if you could go into maybe a little more detail about your stormwater management system, the capacity, how much will hold, how much better would be than what's presently there? I mean, as far as running off into the existing system, you know, that's a problem, and we're worried about water running downhill to, you know, down Rutherford Street, where we have flooding issue.
I know. It was pretty harsh on all of us.
Our town was really bad.
Yeah. Okay. So, the existing site, for the most part, drains toward Academy Street. That's the existing site and the existing building. At calculating the existing peak flow to Academy Street, I calculated it for the 2-year, the 10-year, and the 100-year storm event. So, the 2-year storm was 2.7 CFS. The 10-year was 4.4, and the 100-year was about 8. So, what I am proposing. So, what I am proposing is, this is an underground detention system. It's comprised of, hold on one second, I have to remember what size pipe it is. 48-inch, so very large, 4-foot diameter perforated pipe, surrounded by clean stone, which provides additional volume, and filter fabric to keep the soils out. So, all of the water from the building will flow into this underground system, and then, the rate of that water flowing into the storm sewer system will be controlled by an underground outflow structure. So, that structure has like a weir wall through the center of it. You're familiar. I'm nodding.
You know what? For easy, so everybody understands. Talk about gallons. How many, you know, how many cubic feet does that system hold?
How many cubic feet?
How many cubic feet is that potential?
I think I did the calculation, acres feet.
Because people like to hear gallons. They understand that. It's a big number.
Gallons, yes. Okay. The system will hold. Hold on one second. Maybe you need to get a calculator.
I have it.
Okay. You multiply 0.152 by 43560.
45 what?
43560.
How many cubic, instead of give me that, give me the cubic feet. How many cubic feet?
That's what I'm trying to tell you.
You know, you're talking like a man. Here, if you tell me how many cubic feet, I'll multiply it by 7.2. Or 7.5, if I want to be generous.
All right. 6,621 cubic feet.
6,000, say it again.
6,621 cubic feet.
It's 50,000 gallons.
50,000 gallons. I'm glad you knew that conversion off the top of your head, because I don't.
Sometimes I have to, wow, that take you.
So, that system, it holds a lot of water.
And then, you still have the other bio basin.
Correct. So, this is, this is gonna, it essentially, my boss taught me this comparison, which I appreciate. It essentially works like a bathtub with a clog in it. So, if your bathtub fills up and your drain has a clog in it, the bathtub's going to fill up and it's going to trickle out of the drain. That's how the outflow structure works. So, the pipe will fill up with water, and the outflow structure will mitigate how much of that water can flow downstream. So, I have that underground system.
Is that for the entire structure? I thought that was just for the roof.
It's for the, it's for the roof of the new building.
Yes. So, that's not including the parking, the underground parking deck and stuff. That's a different system.
Well, the underground parking isn't going to get runoff, because it's going to be under the roof.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay?
Because there's another system, there's another system involved with this, right?
Right. There's, so on this side of the site, runoff from this parking lot is going to drain into a bioretention basin. Yes. That's an above-ground basin, so you'll see it. And what happens is, this one fills up with water, and the smallest storm event, the most common storm event, will infiltrate into the soils underground. Anything larger than that will flow over this, the grate of this structure, into the underground, into the storm sewer system.
What's the volume on that bio?
Hold on.
Get that calculator.
Yes.
That's where the base runs.
That's 2650 cubic feet.
20,000.
20,000 gallons.
So, you got 70,000 gallons.
70,000 gallons, hold on.
Can we, can we just stay on the stormwater for a minute? I'm glad the chairman brought that up, because that was what some of my comments were going to be about. I know that you mentioned that you're a major development, which is good, because you're going by different standards. So, first question I have is, we're no longer really looking at 2-year, 10-year, 100-year. The 100-year is now a 10-year, and the 10-year is now a 2-year. And that's something that we, as a township, are going to be focused on, because 2-year storm is an average tropical storm these days. The 100-year, assuming we have here a 10-year. So, when you talk about 50,000 gallons with, and then it slowly dissipates, is that 50,000 gallons, is that a 10-year, a 100-year?
That's the 100-year.
That's the 100-year?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you've built the system for the capacity of the 100-year?
Yes. I mean, I said, I agree with you. I think that storms are increasing. I think climate change is definitely impacting the storms that we're having. We're getting 500-year storm events, like every 10 years at this point.
More lack of impervious surface.
Yeah. So, but I can only design to the standards that are given to me.
Understood. So, my next question is, number 4, was that the applicant was going to confirm there's sufficient capacity in the existing system. I assume that means it's where you're connecting the Washington Avenue?
Correct.
So, have you, you kind of said that Mr. Harris said it's looked okay. Have we really, because you could hold off all stormwater you want and slowly dissipate it, but if that, where it's tying into is inadequate, that's going to be a problem no matter what.
Correct. I can work with Mr. Harris. Apparently, the system in Washington Avenue is maintained by the DOT.
Just have to get DOT.
Yeah.
Maybe you can just talk into their microphone so the audience can hear you. So, indeed, she's tying into a DOT system, so the DOT will have to go through.
Do you know the size of that system?
Off the top of my head. Well, I think the important thing to remember is, years ago, when you put in detention systems, you couldn't exceed the proposed, couldn't exceed the existing. Now, the state requires that your proposed is half of what the existing is. So, they kind of built in.
That's just for major, that's just for major, though?
Yes.
What is that 100-year storm in inches per hour?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
I think it's somewhere around 8 inches per 24 hours.
I think so, 8 inches per 24 hours. I don't know what you guys got at Ida, but there's places in New Jersey that got something like 10 inches over 4 hours. So, it was a really significant storm.
And I gotta assume that's going in the state river, Tom?
Yes, yes. It'll ultimately go over down the valley to the side.
So, in your opinion, this is vastly improving the runoff of this site.
Yes, sir.
When you're done, you'll have less runoff going into the roof, slower.
Controlled. It'll be controlled, yes.
I'm sorry to stay on this, but can you just quickly summarize the control process? How you figure out how much you're going to release and how that system works?
I designed the system based on, it's, the outflow structure, if you look at it, think of it like a wall. And at the bottom of the wall, you'll have just a round hole, okay? And then, as water increases in height, I calculate how much water is released through that hole. And then, as you get into higher stages, there might be a break in the wall called a weir that would obviously allow more water to go over for larger storm events. So, for like the 2-year storm event, the water shouldn't reach the elevation of that that higher stage of patrol. It should just be mitigated by the orifice. At larger, or at like the 100-year storm event, it's going to be at the top of the wall. So, it'll be, there'll be more water being allowed to flow through that orifice as well as over top of the weir.
Any other members have questions of this witness? Anybody in the public have a question of this witness?
Just, just one more, no, so the systems need to, not only control quantity, but they also control quality of the water that we have.
Right, with the sediment, right? The order, the sediment settles, it's a problem. It's a clean water. Mr. Mafucci, where are you? Go ahead.
Just a couple of, Mr. Mafucci, just a couple of quick questions. Did you say that on the street, there will be a loss of 3 parking places?
Yes, sir.
Just 2 24-foot wide driveways?
Yes. But we are eliminating the driveways from the residential properties, so we'll have to re-strike parking along Academy Street. The net loss is 3, so.
Another witness, I believe, there are 5 residential properties with driveways that are being removed.
Thank you.
The new refuse area, where is the access to it?
Yeah, it's right, it's off Academy Street.
It's at the back of the building, correct?
So, the new refuse area is here. It can be accessed off Academy Street. So, this is Academy Street running across here. It'll be accessed off Academy Street. It'll be accessed off Academy Street.
It's on the inside.
How large a weir for a vehicle in there? Pick up the refuse.
Yes, I, I've worked through the attorney templates and I can demonstrate that to the, to the engineer to confirm that, that the refuse area will work with the dumpster.
Oh, okay. Then it may have been seven, I may have missed it. New retention basin?
Bio retention, yes.
Could you have stagnant water at the bottom if it doesn't will drain out?
No. This one I am proposing an underdrain, so it'll, it'll sit in the, in the basin long enough to percolate through like two feet of soil. Then there's an underdrain beneath to make sure that there's no stagnant water.
Thank you.
Can I tell you something? I'm sorry.
Vincent.
Oh, yeah, sure.
All right, Vincent Frantantonio. I'm pleased that this planning board is finally addressing flooding problems and I'm happy to hear that. I understood what you said there. I just wanna go to the bio retention system. That's an open system.
Correct, yes.
How is this, you're proposing to maintain it? Because I've seen these before and over the years, nobody takes care of them and they wind up filling up with debris and shrubbery and vegetative matter which...
Okay. We are required to submit a maintenance plan for the bio retention basin to the township for approval. That maintenance plan will be provided to the client so they know exactly what they need to do to maintain it and make sure that it's working properly.
All right. And how frequently does that have to be cleaned out?
Probably depends on how much water it takes on it. So we'll provide them with, with guidelines on how often to clean out the basin, make sure that there's no debris clogging up the bottom of the basin, just break it out. Obviously, if it's, if it's retaining water, then we'll provide them with guidance on how to reestablish infiltration down into the basin. Usually, we provide guidance for seasonal maintenance, yearly maintenance, and then maintenance if it stops percolating.
And can you tell us who is responsible for enforcing the maintenance of that bio retention system?
I don't know the answer to that.
Mr. Di Lorenzo, I think your office, right? Would probably, there's a problem. Would be addressed from Mr. Di Lorenzo's office.
All right, so.
If you see a problem.
So the township, in other words, the township is responsible for overseeing the maintenance of that. Is that correct?
The church is responsible for maintenance of the basin. If there's an issue, it would be reported to the township and the township would then contact the church.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anybody else in the public have a question?
Mr. Sheldon. I can speak loudly, I don't know if I need the microphone. Michael Sheldon, forty-seventh Floyd Street. I just wanna add a little bit to the discussion regarding the flooding situation, the mitigation of it. Mr. Harris mentioned that the criteria for a hundred-year flood is eight inches of rain in a twenty-four hour period. That's what you said a moment ago. And Ms. Kendedine said earlier in her testimony that this project involves roughly an acre of land. It's considered a large major development.
Correct.
So you have to mitigate an acre of, of land. And if you do the quick calculation, a hundred-year flood, eight inches of rain over a twenty-four hour period on one acre of land, you know, you don't need to do any calculus here, it's, it's over twenty-nine thousand cubic feet of water that would fall on this property in a twenty-four hour period. Eight inches is, is two-thirds of a foot. An acre is forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty square feet. So it's roughly, two-thirds of forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty gives you twenty, exactly twenty-nine thousand, thirty-seven cubic feet of water. Now, your detention system you indicated earlier can accommodate six thousand, six hundred and twenty-one cubic feet. So a hundred-year storm would produce five, essentially five times the capacity of this detention system. Yes, it would be occurring over a twenty-four hour period, but then you have to start looking at the inflow and outflow rates. I, I, as Mr. Melam said a few moments ago, there is some really serious concern here because we're getting hundred-year storms now, which seems to be every two or three years. I, I don't know if this detention system that you've designed could adequately handle a hundred-year storm.
But it, the, you have to keep in mind that it's a detention system. So as water is flowing into it, it's flowing out at a lesser rate. So I don't have to store the entire twenty-nine thousand cubic feet. I only have to store enough to mitigate the rate that it's leaving. So some is coming in and less is going out.
All right, but it's, that's gonna be a really difficult balancing act where you have over a twenty-four hour period, twenty, over twenty-nine thousand cubic feet of water being collected.
Correct.
Your system can hold at any given moment in time, six thousand, six hundred and twenty-one cubic feet. So, you know, you, you have to really carefully deal with.
Yeah, right, that's exactly, yes. I've modeled the system using recognized standards that are approved by the DEP and have been reviewed by the township engineers. So that's exactly right. It's a balancing act between what's flowing into the system and what's flowing out of the system.
I think you said the system is gonna be really strange to handle even, even a ten-year situation, but.
They don't, no, hold on.
Mike, there's an inflow hydrograph and there's an outflow hydrograph, and that's the balancing act.
All right. Well, from my experience of being on the zoning board for seven years and having stormwater analysis, usually there's a very comprehensive, you usually have a separate expert to deal with stormwater management and usually there's a compendium of numerous charts and graphs showing the inflow and outflow.
You can fill free.
I'd like to see it, just for my own notification.
I could send it to you too.
I would appreciate it. All right. Just to lay my concerns that, that the system is going to be able to handle this type of flooding situation.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon.
But do you still need to know?
Is there anybody else in the audience that has a question for this witness? If not?
Point four.
Just a question. You looked at them, I'm sorry.
Hi, I just have one quick question. Since the maintenance of the system falls on the client, so if the system fails, do you know how the outflow rate would be affected? Like, just say it's not maintained for whatever reason.
Well, I'm gonna assume you're talking about the above-ground system, the bio retention system. The, the underground system, if the underground system fails, what'll happen is it will overflow into Academy Street and then flow down the street and into the, into the existing system. The bio retention system, this one is designed for the great overflow. So anything that won't fit into the pond itself will overflow the grate and then flow by pipe into the, into Academy Street. If by some chance that grate is clogged, it will overflow overland onto Academy Street.
Tommy, you have a question?
So, yeah, it behooves the church to maintain the system.
On that same subject, I, I do like the comment from Mr. Frantantonio about the maintenance and the board. Is there something that can be put in place, and I don't know if this is the, the time, to where they, instead of us being reactive as a town, we be proactive, meaning on an annual basis, they have to have a certification come forward to us saying, this has been completed, this has been done. So this way, we know it's being proactively done and not on a reactive end.
We can, should the board decide to approve this application, we may include it as a condition. If it's.
An annual report or something?
An annual report that it's been maintained and cleaned and.
Mr. Di Lorenzo?
Yeah, they can do that on a yearly basis. That's not a issue.
My client has objection, they're gonna take care of it.
If no other board member has a question, we could move to your next witness.
Yes. I'm.
Yeah. Yeah. Do you wanna do it all as one? We can do it as a A1.
Yeah, I mean, like the plan itself, we already admitted, it's just a light color of the, the. I told you on multiple. Okay, that's fine. What is, I was, it was A1?
Yeah, we'll mark it in there.
Mr. Cedra, what's your business address and your occupation?
I am a licensed architect. My business address is one eighty-eight Ego Rock Avenue, Suite Five, Rose Lane, New Jersey.
Are you a licensed architect and how long you've been practicing in the field of architecture?
I am a licensed architect and I've been practicing for over fourteen years. Was a professional license and five years with a professional license.
Have you testified before zoning boards and planning boards and in particular, the valve planning board and zoning board? Have you accepted as an expert on each and every occasion?
Yes, I have.
And were you engaged to prepare your architectural plans for the proposed project?
Yes, I did.
And would you describe the existing structure on this site?
Yes, I have a few boards that I wanna review.
Just when you put each of those boards up, briefly identify those in market evidence. Just do one at a time. What is that first board?
That's the existing, existing site layout.
Just speak a little bit louder.
This board shows the existing site layout. As you see here, in the middle.
So you wanted that A2?
Yeah.
Let's just mark in the corner A2 if you would like. So you're gonna describe the existing structure on the site, is that correct, sir?
Correct. Okay, in the middle of the, first I wanna describe the north arrow as shown at the bottom of the page. In the middle of the, the site here, we have the existing church building. On the right of that, this is the service building, the existing service building. We have also five houses owned by the church. Also, there is seventeen parking spots existing as well, accessible only from Rutgers Court. The existing site, or the existing church is accessible through to two entrances, one from Academy Street here and one from Rutgers Court. And there is three exits of the site here, two, two from the side, one from the main foyer of the church and one from the kitchen area. And there is another exit here of the side of the building on the eastern side. The existing service building hosts the cafeteria, cafeteria here, it's on the north side of the building. And also, there is four Sunday school rooms located here. We have the main foyer located here and the kitchen and the bathrooms located in the back here.
And would you review the modifications that'll be made to that, if any?
Sure, I'm gonna go to the next board. This is the next board that shows the proposed site. As you see, the existing.
You're gonna work that as A3, please.
This is the proposed site layout. As we see here, this is the existing building state as is unchanged. We demolished the, the service building, a portion of the service building, and we demolished the five houses for the construction of the Cafetewiz Center.
And can you please then discuss the proposed new building?
The proposed new, new building consists of four levels and it's located on the western side. There is, the four levels, there is two of them parking, for parking and two for the church service and activities. The two parking levels, one is accessible from the upper side of Academy Street and one is accessible from the lower side of Academy Street.
Would you discuss the ingress and egress to the site?
Sure. The ingress and egress to the site is through Academy Street here. The cars will be going inside the parking lot here and going under the building. I'll show this in another board that explains the accessibility of the building.
That just briefly tells us what A4 is, please.
The A4 shows the lower level parking. That's the first level. To get to the parking, it's accessible from the lower side of Academy Street here. The, the cars will get in and get inside the parking lot and circulates around and gets out. Here also, there is a main entrance foyer for the, for the, to access the building, to access the, the floor levels of the building. This foyer hosts the stairs and elevator shaft. There is three means of egress to this building, three means of egress to the building. This was one of them. There is one from Academy Street where we have the staircase here going to the, the entrance of Academy. There is another staircase by the south end of the building and another elevator shaft.
Okay, you've got arrows showing the ingress and egress.
Yes.
Please just tell us approximately, have any park, approximately, have any parking spaces around this level?
This level has a fifty-four parking spot. This includes the parking under the building and also includes the outside parking between the existing, existing building, which is this, this is the existing church building and this is the proposed building.
And would you please then review the second floor of the proposed new structure?
This is the lower level. This is the first level.
I believe that's A5. And just briefly, tell us what it is.
A5 is the second level parking. It's accessible. A5 is the second level parking. It's accessible from the higher side of the street on Academy. And it shows the parking lot and it has 39 parking spot. And the cars will go in, will circulate around and get out. This is the main foyer from Academy Street, the entry foyer here to access the building. So we have three means of egress, 1, 2, 3. This foyer is accessible from the lower side between the existing building and the new and this one is accessible from Academy Street. And this staircase is accessible from inside the parking lot.
And egress and egress is from the westerly side of the building, is that correct?
Correct.
And can you tell us approximately, have any spaces around this level?
This level has the 39 parking spots.
Anything else on this second floor level?
There is some storage area in the back of the stairs and also, yeah, that's it. Just a storage area and, and just the parking.
Then can you go on to the third floor of the building?
Sure.
I think that, Mr. Peter, that's A6, I guess, right?
Yes.
This is actually, the, the second floor of the building consists of the Sunday school rooms and we have 14 Sunday school rooms. They vary in size between 212 square feet to 700 square feet, which is the, the one that 700 will be used also for meetings. In this floor also, we have the cafeteria, cafeteria and also, we have a commercial kitchen. This, this level also have all the accessible, ADA accessible bathrooms. Also, we have some electrical sprinkler rooms and utility rooms in this level as well. All the, all the accessibility in this building meets the requirement of the ADA. And also, all the corridor sides, all the spaces, all the doorways, everything meets the requirement of the ADA.
Anything further with regard to what you have now referred to as the second floor of the building, is that correct?
Correct. Nothing further about the second floor.
Alright, go to the next floor or the third floor of the building?
The third floor consists of two main spaces. The first space is the sanctuary for youth. And that's toward the south end of the building. And the basketball court, which is on the north side of the building. Also, we have three priest rooms. They have their own bathrooms and closets. Again, we have the handicap accessible bathrooms here in this corner to match on top of the, the one on the second floor. And we have storage rooms, some utility rooms. And that's it for the third floor.
Okay, would you then please review the exterior of the proposed new building?
Sure.
And that is A7, is that what that is?
Yes.
The, the Coptic architecture is very similar to the Roman basilica, which is, it has some, you know, some arched windows, big glazing, big facades where, where sometimes you mix between facades, like you have a base of material and then you change the material on top. Also, it's now with, with the dome, it's, it's one of the feature that's famous with the Coptic architecture. Also, the Coptic course is one of the, the important thing. They show it in the buildings as well. The exterior of the building, originally, I designed the base to match the existing building on site with the brick facade. We got a comment from the planner about the base, you know, just to make it more, a big, in a bigger scale, like to make the base more presentable and with a bigger material. And that's, that's something we're gonna change on the facade. We're gonna propose a big stone blocks on the, on the base of the building. The, 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 the upper floors is stucco lat. It's a real solid stucco that we're gonna present on the upper levels. All the windows will be aluminum clad windows. The glazing for those windows, we are proposing them to be casement and awning. So we don't really have any double hung windows, like these windows, the small windows, they're casement windows. The bigger ones, it will be consist of two panels. One is the fixed panel on top and then the lower panel, maybe we'll use it like an awning, awning window at the bottom. All the window trims is gonna be made with the Eiffel system. You know, the colors, we, we're asked to also provide the colors and material specification for the materials on the elevation, which we will address in our next submission. Also, I'd like to go over the height of the floors and the height of the building, which, so this is the outside. This rendering also shows another view of the outside, which is similar but from the other direction.
So now, could you identify A8 as what it is?
This, this is A08, A08, right?
A8, yes.
Yes, okay, so this is another view from the other side of, the other side-
Wait, say the other side, what, what direction?
This is the front of the building, still the front of the building. The other view that I just showed, it was taken, it was taken from this side. This view, it's taken from Academy Street still, but the other corner of the building. This is a quick one from Rutgers Court. It shows the building and the surroundings, the outline. This is the existing church building and this is the new building and this is the neighbor.
Is there any signage that you had planned to have on the building?
Yes, originally, we designed the building with two signs, but I'm gonna get to the signs on the comments from the planner.
Okay.
The signs part.
And how about the height? Do we, does the height now comply?
Correct, yes, the height, we, we meet the requirement of the height.
So we're not seeing any variance regarding the height of the building or the crotch, anything having to do with this building?
Correct, no balances required for the height. This is, this is the sheets you have, which is A05 and A06. I will go over the height of the building. The height of the building is 50 feet. It's measured from average grade to the top of the flat roof. We have established a ceiling height for the parking garage to be nine feet. We have a two foot floor, two foot four floor system between the, the garage and the next level up. And the next, the second, the upper level parking has a nine foot ceiling height. And then, we have another two foot four for the, for the flooring system. The second floor has a ceiling of 11 feet and then the third floor has a ceiling of 18 feet. We also allow the three foot nine for the roofing system or the, the brush joint that we're gonna roof the building with.
So you talked about the report of the planning consultant, Marion Bucci Carter.
Yes.
Do you have a copy of that report and would you go through it and comment on her suggestions?
Sure, I have a copy of the report. I'm gonna go over the application, renovation for the new building, the proposed new building. For B, which is the first one, yes, we, I'm agreeing with this. I'm gonna use a more of a limestone, split face blocks, a bigger blocks just to give the building some, some strength at the bottom of the building. You know, being the, the base is the, the most visible part of the building. For C, Academy Street, yes, for the main staircase, I, we will revise the plan to turn the Academy Street staircase instead of going sideways. We're gonna make it to go to the front or facing Academy Street. D is talking about discrepancy between the floor plan and the elevation. Actually, these, this is not a discrepancy. These openings are not, are not the driveways. These are actually an opening between the columns. If you go back to, to sheet A1, which I submitted also, A01, what I'm referring to is this in the elevation, the open area between the two columns. And the same, it's happening the same way in the back of the building.
You're reviewing the planning coverage, what letter are you on now?
E, I'm in E now, but all lighting inside of garages. Yes, all the lights will be not visible to the outside of the building. And the building, those garages, it's enclosed to the most part of them except for the entrances of the garages. And also, we're gonna propose, in F, we will propose architecture decorative garage doors for, for, we're gonna do that in the upper level and also the lower level as well.
Mr. Chairman, I'm in G.
I am in G now. The, the main building materials label as stucco, yes, it's real hard stucco or lat, stucco and it's not synthetic stucco. H, provide color and material sample. We will provide the sample for the, for your review. And also, for I, which is talking about railing details, awning, lintels and other coins, we will provide all those. J, the black wall, the black wall, we will address that part in the next submission. This is the wall you're referring to, right? We'll address that. I'll, I'll work out this area with the grading to see how much exposure here I have and then we'll address it with our ornamental features or windows. The double hung windows for the second floor, we don't have double hung windows, they're all casement. These are not double hung, these, these are fixed with the awning panel at the bottom. This one? This, these are casements. Architecture and elevation for the old building, no changes for the old building. The, the old building stays as it is and even the signs, just, they're not changing anything in relationship to the old building. Landscaping and lighting, that wasn't my part.
And the more robust landscaping plan that's been testified to by the engineers, is that correct?
Correct. And the landscape, sea of landscape and also that's was testified by the engineer. And the surface parking, that's also the engineer part.
And can you comply with F and G pursuant to her request?
That's also the engineer part. The full can, yes, but we can't with that.
And going on to the last page, the signage?
Yeah, the signage, originally, we were proposing two signs, one here on Academy Street and the other one was on the east elevation in here. But we're only keeping Academy Street. We will cancel this sign, the one on the east side. We're keeping only the one on Academy Street and those signs, they're not box signs or channel letters now. They're, they're just a, a sign will be applied or made as part of the wall and then it will be lit with the goose neck lighting as it's shown here in my rendering, one of the things. So it'll be like this with just, with, with the goose neck lighting.
Anything further with regard to the planner's report and your comments on it?
Oh, that's it. That's everything.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions. However, what I'd like to try to clarify is there are a couple of issues that the planner is looking to have changed. Should the board see fit to complete this application, as I only have one more witnesses, one more witness. Hopefully, it can be subject, any approval, if granted, can be subject to an agreement between my architect and the planning consultant with regard to those issues.
Yeah, because I was just actually wondering that, you know, we're talking about colors, materials and we're not gonna be able to see it. So I was wondering if you tried to wrap it up tonight, how we go about that?
I, I don't know, my report asked, I thought, I thought they would be, you'd be bringing them to the meeting. I, I asked for, for board review. I mean, you can do that, but I, I would be more comfortable, I think, at least. Maybe if it goes back to the subcommittee, at least you go through materials, because they're still visible.
I'd be perfectly satisfied with the subcommittee report. Obviously, the planner is talking as a planner, that's an architect, so they might have some differences. I don't need to dispute her qualifications, but she's a planning consultant and we've got an architect. So if we can have a subcommittee, if there were to be an approval tonight, if we can have a subcommittee that my architect and the planner could meet with to try to resolve any open issues, I would be happy with that.
Yeah, I think the difference is she's, she's our planner, so she's representing us.
I understand, I'm just saying, absolutely, I respect that. All I'm saying is, this is a planning consultant, that's an architect, that's my one point.
Do you, do you have a planner in any-
Yes, I do.
Okay.
He's ready to come up.
Alright.
Whenever the opportunity presents itself.
So basically, you're planner and your architect at our subcommittee, that way we have-
Well, I would need, if there's planning issues, he'd certainly be there, but I think the key person at the subcommittee based on the concerns of your planner would be my architect.
So could we have both?
Certainly, I mean, if that's who the board was, but I don't think, but I don't think you'll be-
I can say, whoever probably would be best, their architect and their engineer. Okay.
I don't think a planner is necessary at a subcommittee meeting.
Because she's the planner, so.
Right, but she's bringing up-
Architectural and engineering issue.
She's bringing up non-planning issues, she's bringing up architectural and engineering issues. And therefore, I need the architect and engineer to meet with your plan.
So she, she suggests, right, that we have his architect and his engineer, is your suggestion, yes?
And we're happy to do that.
Okay, perfect.
I guess, while your witness is still here, we'll open it up to the board. Any board members have questions?
One question in regards to the steps on Academy Street. Our planner has suggested you turn them towards Academy Street. Do you have the room to turn them towards Academy Street? Do you have the room to turn them towards Academy Street?
Yes, I checked with the engineer yesterday, yes, we do have room to turn them. The platform is not gonna be huge, going to the building, maybe like six or eight feet, but eventually can make the steps work.
How about the way it intersects that great?
We're gonna have to flatten out this area by the stairs, where the stair engages with the.
Yeah, it's gonna be tricky.
Yeah.
It'll look better, I believe.
Yeah, I think it will improve the aesthetic appearance of the building.
Counselor, may I?
Yes, in regards to the parking, I hear a lot going on with the parking, two decks. Is it, is it fair to say that when the parking is not used during the day, it will be utilized by people on Academy or around?
No, it's private parking, and we will obviously not have parking on the street, and whatever's on the street would be available to the Academy people. Of course, now, remember, five homes are no longer in existence.
That's what I was going, right, and they were, and they were their five homes.
A large reduction in demand on.
Right, and they were their five homes. Okay, now, I just ask a question.
And also, we're installing garage doors on those, yeah, so it'll be, it's not in use.
It'll be cut and dry, and they'll be blocked.
Correct. And also, it helps the security of the building as well, as opposed to just an open parking.
Actually, we were, to follow up on that, we were under some impression that residents that live on Academy, and including patrons or employees of the library, it's adjacent, we're gonna have access through some of this parking, the parking deck, you're saying that's not it?
We never understood, did a lot of the liabilities, you mean, the issues involved, say.
I'm not necessarily asking for it, I'm just trying to confirm, because it was not just my impression, but the impression of people at the, there was a meeting, I'm told, from people between the people at the library and the church, and we were told that there was gonna be some consideration.
Well, I don't think that was the last application, there was a time back when where I had absolutely nothing to do with the application, Mr. Cazarelli was the attorney at that time, I was not. There were meetings with, I heard there were meetings with the library at that time, but not the last application, that topic did not come up, Mr. Mayor, at the last application, to the best of my knowledge. But again, six or seven years ago, I guess, there was an application that went all the way up to the Superior Court, back and forth, and the library was in the process of meeting with the church, from what I have heard, again, not in my time, and maybe at that time, they were talking about cherry parking, but not the last application, which was before the zoning board and withdrawn, and Mr. Delgert was here to confirm, as I hear him shaking, said that that never came up at that meeting.
And there's no internal consideration that would be afforded to allow for parking when the church is not in use?
You're asking for a very difficult thing.
I don't know, is that the question?
This is interior parking, I mean, I have a building, as you know, with a parking lot in front, people parking there all the time, I got absolutely no problem with it, I'm happy to have it parked there, but when you're talking about a garage, an ingress and egress to garage, and liability that's gonna occur, that's a different situation, as a lawyer, I can't.
Understood. I'm just trying to clarify.
I'd rather clear it up now than if.
Why don't you say no?
I wasn't saying you can't do it, I'm saying, it's a lot, I can't, I mean, I can't make decisions, I'm a lawyer, but I can't recommend that that be allowed, again, a surface parking area like that.
Does any of the board members have questions? Is that Mr. Delgert here?
Yes. Who's to clarify this? The first application did have an agreement that there would be a, but there was another parking lot in the first application, where the building is being knocked down, that was being made into a parking lot, and that had an entrance from Academy, and that was gonna be used by both the church and the library, that was the agreement, that was the first case. The second case, as he said, it never came into play, but it was supposed to be where the building that they're looking to knock down, where the kitchen is, that was where the parking lot was supposed to be, okay? Now, there's something else you should take into consideration, since you're bringing this up. This church was technically threatened at one time by terrorists going back to have an insecure garage, and let anybody park in there is not safe, in my opinion, there's a safety concern there because of that, so, that's all I wanted to say, to clarify everything.
Just to clarify the history, I'm not talking about threats, but these people are the minorities in each, I'm sure you know their history.
I understand their history, I understand their history here in Belleville, I was here twenty years ago when they came in, they've been nothing but great neighbors to Belleville, I was just asking a question for clarification, thank you.
Any other members of the public have questions of this witness? Mr. Francis Anthony, can I?
Yes, I like this plan, it's a lot better than the previous plan was, so I thank you. The only question I have, as a contractor, did you say that the bottom is brick?
Yeah, originally, I designed it to match the main building, the existing building, but given the scale of the building, because this is a bigger building, I think we need to change the material to make it a little bit bigger, like a stone blocks, where sometimes it can reach like the size of eight by sixteen.
It's gonna be stone?
Yes.
That's fine. The upper levels, did you say ifus system?
No, the ifus system is only gonna be the trimming around the windows, but the walls themselves, it will be actual hard stucco.
Be hard masonry?
Yes.
Stucco?
Yes.
All right, that was my concern.
Yes, no, definitely, we're not gonna do that.
The contract to forty-nine years, that ifus system is terrible, I mean, you've got.
It doesn't even last four years.
You've got people painting, their ladders dig into it, and the building, you've got the mess across the street, you've got a blue field also, thank you, it's gonna be hard stucco.
Hard stucco, thank you.
Chris Carter?
I just have a couple of questions that may be answerable by you and maybe by the engineer. Can you put up A2? No, no, your A2, the colorful rendering. Yes, side layers, thank you. That's not the one, the next, so it's A3, that's existing, I'm sorry. Okay, this is the one, because this clearly shows how much of the surface parking is exposed to adjacent properties and to Academy, and how much is covered. The reason I'm asking here and bringing this up is because the dumpster, the new, the second dumpster location is put in the corner parking lot right there, and the pickup for it, the truck travels all the way through underneath anyway, and I'm wondering if you can shift that location to be under the building, if it's inside and under the building, there's, a variance is eliminated because it's supposed to be inside, and it won't be visible by any neighboring properties or people coming in and out of the driveway.
Sure.
Okay. And another item was, I want to clarify, and this may be for your engineer, is I also asked for additional landscaping, but my request was made after the plans were revised and some additional landscaping was added. I think, given the size of this site, there can be a lot more foundation plantings and a considerable amount more evergreen plantings, and I also asked for a plan that showed any trees that are being taken down in the residential yards, so that we can really tell what's gonna be happening, because there'll be some changes on this site, but I think you've shown that you've made every effort to make those changes fit in with the neighborhood, and I think some more screening on the periphery may be helpful, and maybe the elimination of chain link fences and replaced with privacy fencing in those locations, since there's only such a small amount of chain link fencing here, and they're up against residential properties, I think that would be best.
Sure.
Okay. Okay. The, and I think, was it, I think you addressed everything else that I had, some of the questions that we talk about later are addressing blank wall, adding some windows there, like you have windows on the next floor.
Yeah, we didn't have enough time to address those issues, but we will submit all of them to you.
Okay. And the item, which I believe was agreed to, but I want to clarify and make sure that there was no misunderstanding, one of the things that impacts communities the most sometimes is lighting, and it just doesn't show up on the plans as much, but when the building gets built, it doesn't fit in with the residential community, and so, I know you're, you want this to be an attractive building, and you are doing everything, it seems you can, to upgrade it, and there are some wall-mounted fixtures on the new building, and even looks like they've been added to the existing that face Academy, and I would request that those not be utilized, that any wall-mounted fixture not be like a floodlight, that anything that's on the front facing Academy would be a decorative sconce, and if there's extra light needed, maybe a few in a bolter in the sidewalk improvements, just so that those lights aren't pointing at the residential process. Okay?
Got it.
That's it.
Does anybody else in the public have a question? Mr. Sheldon?
Michael Sheldon, forty-seven Fledge Street. Many numbers have been discussed tonight, but one number that hasn't been given for the record is what is the true height of this building? And I know it's complicated by the fact that you're having to determine the height of a building on a slope terrain, and I've done some reading about this, I know there are many different methodologies used when a building is on a slope terrain to calculate its effective height, but based on the plans that I've seen, the, if you include the dome and the cross as part of the overall building height, if you measure at the midpoint, I'm getting a number that's about seventy-three feet at the midpoint, now, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the RC zone, the maximum allowed height is fifty feet, but there is a little asterisk there in the schedule, that there's an excess of thirty-five percent allowed under acceptable conditions, but that only brings, gives you sixty-seven point five, so again, for the record, can someone please say what is the true height of this building at its midpoint, and do you need, when you give the true height, do you need to also include the dome with the cross at its apex? I have another question, but I might want this one answered first before I.
So we're gonna answer this in two pieces, actually, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you the height of the building, so the height of the building, the maximum height is fifty feet measured from average grade, so we take the average grade around Academy, and we measure the height from the average grade to the highest point of the roof, which is the main structure of the building, of this building. And we are allowed thirty-five percent for any religious features, like a spire, like a dome, like a dome with a cross. My plan shows a higher height than the thirty-five percent, which is, thirty-five percent of the fifty is seventeen foot six inches, my plan shows more than that, and that was a comment from the planner, we will adjust the plan and the dome height, we'll adjust the dome height and the cross to meet the requirement of the seventeen foot six, so the final height of the building will be fifty feet below the seventeen foot six.
So you will keep it at sixty-seven?
I will keep it at seventeen foot six, I'll adjust the plans, and we'll change the height of the dome and the cross to meet the requirement.
I appreciate that, I thank you for confirming my quick calculation that you were with the existing plan.
Yes, we were higher than the number.
The other thing I wanted to discuss with you, at the beginning of your testimony, you acknowledged that the five homes next to the church, which actually are churches, the church's property, will be raised as part of this project, and those are, the addresses are one forty-three, one forty-five, one forty-seven, one forty-nine, and one fifty-three.
Correct.
The first three properties, one forty-three, one forty-five, and one forty-seven, I believe that they have been owned by the church for quite, quite some time, it's the other two houses, one forty-nine and one fifty-three, that within the last couple of years have also been acquired by the church, but the first three houses, and I think one forty-three is a three-family, one forty-five is a two, and one forty-seven is a two or a three-family, the current use, the previous use of those homes has been residential, I assume they've been.
Correct, they've been residential properties.
They've been rental properties, right, which leads me to the following question, I don't want people to say I'm discriminating or anything, but I do have a legitimate question here, you just said that those properties have been used as rental, as a church, they're entitled to tax exemption, so they've been using those buildings as rental properties without having to pay property taxes, which is perfectly fine and good, it's perfectly legal, but let me just, Mr. Captain, I know you're ready to say, let me just give you, let me say one more thing, and then you can yell at me, I object. Up through last year, I was a trustee on the Belleville Board of Education, in two thousand and nineteen, when this was, project was going to be heard by the zoning board, I did some other homework, and discovered that those three buildings, one forty-three, one forty-five, and one forty-seven Academy, which you said have been used as rental without having to pay property tax, which is perfectly understandable and legal, but nevertheless, those three houses, three homes, had seven children enrolled in the Belleville school system. Now, it is, it costs roughly twenty thousand dollars a year to educate each child in the Belleville public school system.
Mr. Chairman, is this relevant to the application?
No, it is, it does have relevance.
Maybe you should bring it up with the tax department.
No, no, it has relevancy, because.
Children are gonna be gone because of me, a parking deck, so we just saved a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Yes, you did.
No, 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 that's not the right way to look at this, what has been happening is that, you know, I want to take for granted that the church is a good community partner, but the fact of the matter is that they had been, they've been deriving a huge benefit by having their kids in the school system without having to pay taxes.
Like I said, maybe you should take it up at the tax department.
Well, you have to wonder, you know, obviously, this building is gonna cost more than a few shiny nickels, by not having to pay taxes all these years, by having all that rental power.
Again, that is irrelevant to a zoning application.
No, it is.
I object to your question, your line of questioning, it is irrelevant.
We heard your argument, Mr. Sheldon.
It's just unfair to the taxpayers of Belleville.
Maybe bring it up with the tax department, but it doesn't have anything to do with this application.
Actually, I think what needs to be, who needs to be contacted here is the IRS.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the public?
Call my next.
Yeah, why don't we take a ten-minute break, just to give our, before we tell our reporter here, we're taking a ten-minute break, don't go far. Questions in the public, when you're ready to call up your next witness, Mr. Delgert.
Mr. Chairman, I'd call my next witness by way.
I'm sorry, Mr. Delgert, I'm sorry about that, I do have one for the engineer. Sure, about the electric charging stations for the cars, is that gonna be addressed in the plans?
That's a state law, and we have to do it.
Yes, I just thought it would be reflected in the plans, but.
Fifteen percent, okay, but it will be.
Okay, all right, that's it.
Fifteen percent, so we gotta have sixteen, I guess, sixteen charging stations, we did discuss, and though we didn't present it.
Yeah, that's what I was.
No question. I think you have, just, are we on the record? So I think we have a period of time to do that, so I think you have to have that five percent when you start, and then I think over the next three years, whatever the regulation and whatever the state requirement is, we will comply with the charging stations. I'd like to call my next witness.
Hold on, Mr. Griziano.
I'm sorry, I have one question on something that was mentioned at the end, about security, right, that's gonna be all gated in and security overnight, but with that said, my assumption there'll be cameras. But with that said, my assumption there'll be cameras in. If it's a high risk, or at one time was a high risk, is our police department gonna have any insight into those cameras in case of anything? Or how does that work with something of that nature?
That's a normal practice, as I understand it, and we certainly would comply with that.
Okay, I'm just asking because of the high risk, that's what came to mind, so.
I would say that we will have them. Security cameras are mandatory, basically. And the information from them would certainly be available to the Bellevue police department.
Thank you.
Mr. Steck.
He seemed to be missing a microphone.
Do you swear from the testimony or about him, or do you think the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mr. Steck, would you please introduce yourself and review your qualifications?
Yes, my name is Peter Steck, S.T.E.C.K., 80 Maplewood Avenue, Maplewood, New Jersey. I'm a licensed planner in New Jersey since 1976. I'm a lawyer of education. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering and a master's in city and regional planning and a bachelor's report.
Mr. Chairman, recognizing you've been here before, yes.
Many times before, well, except your witnesses, isn't it?
Now, would you teleboard what you reviewed in preparation for your presentation tonight?
Yes, I reviewed the application materials, toured the site and the surrounding neighborhood, looked at the master plan and the zoning ordinance. I was present earlier this evening to hear the testimony of the other witnesses.
And would you describe the property from a planning perspective?
Yes, this is obvious to the board, but I'm gonna connect it later with my conclusions. This is a fairly substantial property in size. It's bigger, it got larger than the prior attempts to expand the facility. It's 1.469 acres. It's got 443 feet of frontage on Academy Street, which as you know is a one-way street. And as indicated by the applicant's engineer, it slopes upward. Right now, the existing front setback is 16.9 feet. And the property is already described as the formal church facility. And then over time, the applicant has acquired five adjacent residential properties that will now be consolidated as one lot.
Would you review the surrounding area?
I'm sure the board is familiar with this, but Academy Street is primarily residential, although obviously as you get closer to the east, you have your main business district. The property immediately to the east is the Bellevue Library. So to the north are typically two-unit residential buildings, wood frame. That pattern of land use also occurs to the west, up the hill. To the rear, as you know, and accessed by Rutgers Court, are garden apartment developments.
And would you review the master plan considerations and master plan reexamination report?
Yes. Your last reexamination report was very recent. Planning board adopted in March 8th of 2021, and it did not recommend any changes to the current zone. There was a lot of discussion about shared parking, again, as a mechanism to try to increase development potential along your main business district. The last formal comprehensive master plan was January 8th of 2009. It recommended the RC zone for this property and indicated that houses of worship were to be a permitted use in the RC zone.
And would you review the zoning considerations?
This is in the RC zone, which also extends to the other side of Academy Street. To the east is the BG zone, which is a commercial zone. Different from years ago, in the RC zone, which is basically a multifamily zone, houses of worship are specifically listed as a permitted use. And there are design bulk standards that apply. There are, essentially the zone is divided into three subcategories. There are duplex units, triplex units, and then all other, and that's the category that we fit in. There are special standards, such as a minimum lot area 10,000 square feet, minimum width of 100, and minimum depth as 100. So there are a number of bulk standards that apply as potentially would be C variances for this. I'll try to, while the list of items of relief kind of changed from the early part of the evening, because the applicant has consented to a number of changes as we went along, I wanna repeat what I think are the list of items of relief that we need. First of all, our new building is 16.9 feet. And if you recall, there's kind of a bump out in the front, so the closest part of the building is 16.9 feet, which is less than the 20-foot minimum setback. And when I describe these, I'll just lay the groundwork for some items of relief. This building is kind of an institutional building, is more akin to the library than it is to the houses in the area. And the library setback is even closer to Academy than this is. It's not at a perfect straight line, but that's about 16.2 feet, as I scaled it from the plans. So we're more in line with that institutional use than the houses further up the hill. So anyway, because we're building a new building, that's a, one of the variances we need is the front yard variance. The code requires onsite loading for three spaces based on square footage. This is somewhat of a unique situation, and that's a generic loading requirement. As the applicant described, the truck access to this facility is not tractor-trailers. It's not like a retail operation. It's going to be box vans. And the property has two means of access. One, trucks can come from Academy Street and enter onto the property, or they can come on the back way and load from that indication. And in my opinion, to have loading docks that are more than, are functionally required is really a waste of space. This is not a building that's going to accommodate or need the use of tractor-trailers. Some of the parking spaces are 9 by 18 feet, and your code requires 9 by 19 feet. I'll note that in some zones, you allow 9 by 18, and that's the residential site improvement standards in any residential project. The state says an applicant can rely on 9 by 18. This is not a commercial operation. You know, the congregants that come here are gonna come in largely, you know, passenger cars. RSI says that 9 by 18 is an acceptable dimension. So the answer is it functionally works. We have a number of spots that are wider in the depth because of column spacing, but a number of our spots are 9 by 18 rather than 9 by 19. They functionally meet what the purpose of the ordinance is. Your ordinance says there should be only two driveways. There should be a driveway. We have two driveways on Academy. And if you keep in mind the length of this building, you know, we could have had a series of, you know, one and two family homes, each with their own driveway. There could be multiple driveways here. Here, we have two driveways rather than one. They're both bi-directional driveways. And the advantages of this is that we're taking advantage of the slope up. We don't have to do internal ramping within the parking garage. We could access because of the different elevations from different parts of the property. Given the length of the property, the fact those driveways are quite separate, and because Academy Street is a one-way street, in my opinion, it certainly eases traffic circulation, and it takes advantage of the topography. We have a curb cut, curb cuts that are greater than 20 feet. And I note that in your commercial zones, you allow wider curb cuts. And so this was, in my judgment, the 20-foot limit was intended to apply to residential properties primarily. But because this is not commercial and not residential, it's in between, and because the wider curb cut simply allows more generous turning movements, and because of the length of the property, in my opinion, it's a reasonable alternative with no negatives. The applicant's plans showed curb cuts, as I understand it. And the recommendation is that the sidewalk taper down as an easier path for pedestrians to walk. And I believe the applicant is willing to change the design to accommodate that recommendation. We have a conforming number of parking spaces. Technically, 105 is required, and we're proposing 105. Along with the electrical charging stations, and we're gonna do, you have to do 15%, I believe, over three years is the timing. But the code has a real, somewhat illogical twist. And it says that up to 10% of your requirement, you can count one electrical charging station as two spaces. So actually, strictly applying the code, we have more parking than required, but it's a crazy part of the legislation, because you can't fit two cars in an EV charging spot, but it's there. Let's see. We lowered the height, the building, formal building height stays the same at 50 feet, but we are shrinking the height of the dome and the cross. So this is 100% conforming in terms of the height of the building. There are a number of changes that you've heard about this evening that potentially could be finalized in meeting with the committee. It has to do with the fencing type, the amount of landscaping. We're going to comply with the tree spacing as recommended in the code. And we're going to change the materials as already described by the applicant. So there are a number of comments that we've consented to change. And again, to get them definitively on paper, it would certainly be acceptable to have a condition the applicant resolve these details at a subcommittee level. Am I missing any other variances?
Not that I, Rico.
What do you have?
I have just minor fences that are not on the property line and the size of the signs.
As indicated, we're removing one of the signs, given the size of the building. And the sign on the new building is going to be the natural place. It's above the first-level window. So if this were, you know, a streetscape in your downtown, that's where you would naturally put the sign. But given the size of the building, it's quite a minor sign size. The other one, I forgot. Was it the fence?
The fence is not on the property line.
Your ordinance requires the fence on the property line. And actually, no one wants to do that, because you don't want the neighbor to own half of your space, your fence. You want to have it entirely on yours. But we're coordinating the fencing, you know, with the retaining walls, one of the issues. So it's a safety feature. You want it, since the wall is over four-feet height, you want to have that safety feature on the wall. So there's an obvious public purpose there. So back to the beginning. We need a number of these variances. None of them are D variances, they're all C variances that this board has the power to grant in connection with the site plan. Essentially, they're all justified by the benefits substantially outweigh the detriments. Not to wipe the slate clean, but this is an inherently beneficial use, recognized by the courts. So the very fact that there is a use, from a practical point of view, here's a community that wants to invest in its youngsters and it wants to stay in Bellevue. But from a legal point of view, this is an inherently beneficial use. It's good by its very nature. The design and the setbacks, in my opinion, they create a more aesthetic appearance. The applicant has indicated he's gonna modify the lighting. This is an application where, given the fact that there are pre-existing conditions, we can't make the dot lot any deeper. We have two access points, front and back, which is certainly superior from a fire protection point of view. In my opinion, the benefits of accommodating this development substantially outweigh the detriments. And again, the other part of the negative criteria is that, in my opinion, granting this relief is not impair the intended purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Indeed, compared to 10 years ago, the master plan endorses this use. The zoning ordinance makes it a permitted use. In my opinion, the board has before it the reasons that they can approve the variances and waivers being sought. Just to repeat the waivers, the designated loading zone on property is a design waiver. The 9 by 18-foot spaces is a design waiver. The two driveways on Academy Street are a design waiver. The width of the curb cut is a design waiver. And the handling of the, well, the driveway curb cuts, I guess we're gonna comply now, because we're gonna slope the sidewalk as opposed to having curves.
And a curb apron, yeah.
A curb apron rather than a set curb. So the, and the remaining items, again, would be variances. And again, I believe that the board has evidence with the prior to witnesses, prior three witnesses and myself to comfortably approve this application and grant preliminary and final site plan approval.
Obviously, I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman, of this witness, and I have completed with my witnesses.
I'm gonna grab some water.
I would like to sum up. Mr. Chairman, is no questions of the public of Mr. Steck?
Yeah, I'm just gonna ask, does anybody in the public have a comment or question they'd like to make before we wrap up this application? Have a comment? Go ahead, you're welcome. Alex, that's 144 Academy Street. Do you have something to give the board?
Okay, what you have before you is my statement to Mayor Malmaham and the other council members dated October 12th, 2021, that was read by the township clerk at the October 26th, 2001 council meeting, in which I assert that the Bellevue, New Jersey Police Department cannot be trusted to respond to life-threatening crimes in a timely manner. And a news article dated November 28th, 2021, which contains a report of a 54-year-old woman who told police she was stabbed multiple times near her home in Bellevue, New Jersey, which substantiates the proclamation of police unreliability.
Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to interrupt this gentleman, but that has nothing to do with this case.
Is that related to this app, I don't really know.
Exactly related.
It's definitely related?
Security issues. This proclamation of police unreliability to the credibility of that which I will now relate to this application. The recent changes in the master plan by the Bellevue governing body, which would allow for this structure on Academy Street, does not include one legitimate reason for denying this application that cannot legally be overlooked. The lack of concern for public safety and the unreliability of the Bellevue, New Jersey Police Department to respond in timely manner to life-threatening crimes. to respond in timely manner to life-threatening crimes. In a Belleville Times article titled "Extra Security for Orthodox Christians Celebrants" stated Friday, January 7th, 2011, the township manager Victor Keating, with respect to the harsh security imposed on the Belleville, New Jersey taxpayer for the protection of St. Mary's Cophie Church from terrorists, said, "These are law enforcement matters on a federal level. I cannot comment on this matter because it could put people's lives in jeopardy. Residents have to understand that the world we live in today is filled with people that do really horrible unthinkable things. I apologize to them, but this is the world we live in." At the September 6th, 2012 zoning board meeting, Chairman Del Gershio held himself up as a security expert publicly declaring, "If anybody knew about security, it was me."
I represent this, I have all the confidence in the Belleville Police Department. They're an outstanding group of gentlemen.
Sir, please don't interrupt.
And I'm interrupting because you're not saying something that's relevant to this case.
At the January 5th, 2012 zoning board meeting.
Excuse me, sir. You can only make a comment or question that is directly related to the application before the board.
The application, I. I'm talking about security of the application.
Tell me in plain English, you're saying that the Belleville Police Department is on your.
Is unreliable.
Okay.
We can't be trusted.
For this applicant or for the whole Belleville town?
Well, we disagree with that.
Okay, but that has nothing to do with this particular applicant.
Yes, it does, security.
It does not. It does not.
If you allow me to continue.
I'm not going to allow you to continue unless you have a specific question or comment that is directly related to this application before this board.
If you approve this application, you will be denying our right to equal protection under the law. You may think not, but I will have to drag.
I know from a legal standpoint as a lawyer, that helps.
I will have to drag Belleville, New Jersey into a court of law to prove my point. If that's what you want, then that's what we'll look.
You can do that if you'd like. Take a seat.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else have a comment or a question as directly related to this application before this board?
Good evening, my name is Maggie Merrick. I'm a retired orthopedic surgeon. I have been here in this place, this is the second time. I am honored to be here, the first time, August 18th, 2001, when Mr. Emmerich was there. Church suffered a lot. And we are not doing something wrong. We are doing something to keep the kids off the street. We are doing something to stop a husband beating his wife in the church. We are helping these people. The gentleman from the library, you can ask Ricky Anuzi. We were helping him, we helped Juan, we helped everybody. Why people are against us helping people? Believe me, I am listening to everything. I know about buildings. You're talking about the drainage and whatnot. You can do a lot of rain, drainage wells, you can do 20 on the other side. But come together, if you put any recommended, we will comply. We are part of the community. We are helping the community. You can ask everybody, you can ask Frank, you can ask Corinne, you can ask, you can ask everybody. We are helping. We had some people in the street of the church, Academy, had fire in the house. We put everything in the church for their help. So why people are anti? What goes around, comes around. Believe me, this is a win-win situation. And if there's something that anybody up in the board not happy about, we negotiate, not big deal. I have my hearing aid is broken now, so you have to raise your voice. But what I'm saying, honest to God, this is for the goodness of. Again, your last word I say. This place used to be A Hafad Achim, A Hafad Achim synagogue in Belleville. We bought it in 2001, and we started 2002. Guess what? A Hafad Achim is coming back to Belleville and registered this week or two weeks ago. If they ask for our help, we will never hesitate to help them. We help everybody. So why? I beg you. Not my wish, it's God's wish. I remember, I said last time in 2001, this is for the house of the mother of God. It's not my house, it's not your house. It's the house of Mama of God. If your mother asks you for something, wouldn't you do it? Especially helping the people, educating the people. I'm a doctor, if someone comes to ask me something, would I hesitate? The church offers a, in the sense, help the people.
Do leave all of it.
Thank you very much, comments.
Thank you.
If there's no further comments from the public, we'll close the public portion. And Mr. Gashian, would you like to make a summation?
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman. First thing I want to say is, my clients and certainly I have tremendous confidence in Belleville Police Department. They're an outstanding group of gentlemen. So this is obviously permitted use. The board has heard all the details. And this is, we've got our self-contained parking, we have the 105 spaces, we have the front and rear access good for the fire department. There is no variance for the building height. The building aligns with the library, and the setback is appropriate with regard to that. There are a number of variances. Mr. Stack went over each of those variances and gave you detail and reasoning why it should be. There's no onsite loading, but we don't need onsite loading. All we get is an occasional box truck. We have 9 by 18 parking spaces, that's what the RISI requires. We have two driveways versus one. We have a gigantic long building. We've got the height issue, and we're eliminating five driveways from the residential dwellings next door. The curb cuts are greater than 20 feet, but they're going to be sloped in accordance with what you're planning on. The electrical charging stations, we will comply with them. And technically, because of them, we have more than the required number of spaces. Again, I'm going to repeat, the height will conform. And last but not least, excuse me. My client is excepted of a subcommittee meeting with your planner. There will be my engineer, my architect to finalize the details, most of which are raised by your planner, such as increasing the shrubbery a little bit more. We did submit a revised plan with more landscaping, but we're certainly willing to do more. So I think the addition of this church will be a tremendous asset to the town. You've got a beautiful facility that's going to keep the kids here and be taken care of, in the gym, in the classrooms, proper education, proper things for the youth of America. And we all know that that's the most important thing we've got going today. Again, the board's been very kind in their time and consideration, and I appreciate it on behalf of my clients. Thank you.
Thank you. Any of your board members have a final comment? If not, I guess at this time. I guess, at this time, I guess we'd like to make a motion for the approval, but we have some conditions. We have the acceptance of Mr. Harris' report, the acceptance of Mr. Di Lorenzo's report, Ms. Carter's report, and one other thing was the yearly inspection of the attention system and the acceptance of a subcommittee with regards to materials, exterior building materials and colors, along with your architect and engineer and our planner.
And landscaping.
Who else?
And landscapers.
And landscapers. So is there any other conditions?
Landscaping, no, it's landscaping.
So those conditions, we'd like to, if anyone would like to make a motion for approval of this application, make a motion.
One second.
Please call the roll.
Chairman De Niro.
Yes.
Mr. Conde.
Yes.
Mr. Vanda.
Yes.
Mr. Bowe.
Yes.
Mr. Rybano.
Yes.
Ms. Wong.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Mr. Gary.
Yes.
Ms. Alford.
Yes.
Mr. Dye.
Yes.
Officer Nivel.
The application is approved.